7007, meeting to order. Will you all please stand to say the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please call the roll? Councilmember Barnwell?
Yeah.
Falcone?
Here.
Horton?
Yes.
House? Schneider? Williams? Mayor Bloom? Item one, employee recognition service award pins. Come on up. Hi. You're first. Here's your pin. Don't leave. I've got something more here. Thirty-five years of service. That's amazing. That's good. Victor Acosta began his career with the city of Santa Barbara on July 1st, 1971, when he was hired as a temporary plant operator, one. On August 16th, 1972, he was hired as a permanent employee in the position of sewage plant operator, one. Victor was quickly promoted through the ranks, and by November of 1980, he attained the top job at the treatment plant, wastewater superintendent. Victor started work for the city before the current El Stero Treatment Plant was constructed. He was present throughout the construction period and lead plant staff in starting up and operating the new treatment plant. This period of Victor's career was characterized and marked by 12- to 18-hour days. The wealth of knowledge gained by Victor during the construction and startup of the plant continues to be an asset to plant employees. Victor has overseen many upgrades and improvements at the treatment plant, including the construction of the recycled water plant and desalination plant, and Victor's outstanding work has been recognized and acknowledged by his supervisors in numerous commendations. Victor holds a Gray V license as wastewater treatment plant operator. This is the highest level of certification. Victor has been an active member of the California Water Environmental Association, which is the professional association for those in the wastewater industry. He has served as the chair of the local chapter and has received numerous awards for his service. Victor and his wife Gloria have been married 34 years. They have three children, Cynthia, Priscilla, and Victor, and five grandchildren, all of whom reside locally. Victor, it's my privilege to honor you today on your 35th anniversary. Congratulations.
Mayor and city council members, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for inviting me and for presenting me with this wonderful proclamation. I very much appreciate this honor. These past 35 years as an employee of the city of Santa Barbara have been very challenging at times, especially when dealing with environmental laws that are enforced by the EPA, Appalachian Control District, State Customs Control Board, and other local and statewide environmental groups. I also want to extend my appreciation to all the staff at the El Stero Wastewater Treatment Plant, the dedication and loyalty of the plant operators, maintenance and laboratory technicians, collection systems, personnel, office, and pre-treatment staff have made El Stero an enjoyable and interesting place to work. I also would like to acknowledge the support of my family, especially during the occasional stressful times at work. Without their constant support, these 35 years of service would probably not have been as enjoyable. In closing, I'd like to thank you again for presenting me with this award. I would also like to remind you that while the wastewater treatment section may not be as glamorous or recognizable as the police and fire department, it can take only a single flush of a toilet or one backup sewer to know that we're there to protect the environment and preserve the environment and prevent our creeks and notions from being contaminated. Once again, I thank you.
Is there a family here?
Yes, I'd also like to introduce my family, and there's another grandson coming up. That's my family back there.
(inaudible).
And then when I call, my second family is way in the back. Thank you, people I work with.
Daniel McCarter began his career as a firefighter for Ventura County Fire Department in Newberry Park, California. Daniel was hired on August 16th, 1982, by the city of Santa Barbara Fire Department. Five years later, he was promoted to engineer, and in April 1999, he was promoted to captain. Daniel has functioned as an instructor for several of the recruit academies. He was a member of the hazardous materials team for 15 years and has worked at stations 1, 2, 3, and is currently working at station 7 on the sea shift. Daniel has received commendations for his field observer skills and attention to detail during the day fire in 2006, an exemplary action report for his engine company's quick response to protect residents during the Cerito fire, and in 1992, he was named firefighter of the year by the veterans of foreign wars. Before joining the city of Santa Barbara Fire Department, he has also served in the U.S. Army as a special forces combat engineer. Daniel enjoys a very active, personal life and is an avid sailor and hiker. He and his wife Sarah have been married for 14 years and have two children, son Aiden, 13, and I believe right there, and daughter Julia, nine years old. Daniel, it's a pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service with the city fire department. On behalf of the city council and your fellow citizens, we thank you and congratulate you on this momentous occasion.
Well, I was just going to accept this and sneak away, but I was talked into a speech, and so here it is. Madam Mayor, members of city council, thank you for recognizing my 25 years of community service. I was hired by the city in August 1982, along with two other candidates, Jan Svensson, an Olympic athlete, and Meredith Watson, now a fire captain for Truckee Fire Department. In an occupation dominated by males, I was the first male minority in a Santa Barbara City Fire Academy class. In the last 25 years, this department has participated in many significant events: two war fires, the Sea Cliff incident, the Rodney King riots, Northridge earthquake, Malibu fires, Painted Cave fire, Lock and Chea landslide, numerous floods, and the loss of one of our own, Steve Masto. I've seen many changes in 25 years here: more female firefighters, from one when I came on to six until we just, one just retired; from seven stations to eight stations, now including the airport; station four moved to, from De Lavina Street to Ontario; station two moved from Haley to Casique Street; remodels at station six and station five; station three traded an arch for a square-shaped apparatus door to accommodate a bigger, new fire engine, which is just three inches of clearance on the sides and one inch above the light bar. We have gone from riding tailboard on engine seven to enclosed air-conditioned cabs. This department has progressed from hazmat pickup truck to the envy of the modern world, a state-of-the-art, bigger-than-the-biggest multi-function hazmat apparatus with all the bells, whistles, lighting, and air. Yet the biggest change came not from bigger but smaller: the computer, which I was told would make hard copy obsolete. Before the computer, I remember watching Chief Vaughn document in a large, red logbook with a print so perfect that even today's computer cannot compare. We are today better prepared to handle more types of incidents using more sophisticated equipment, all requiring more technical knowledge, and yet one thing has stayed the same: the firefighter. Many are newer, faster, smarter, stronger, quicker, and younger, but all have the thing that never changes: heart. They give, and they keep giving. They give to each other, and they give to the community 24/7, 365 days a year. I am honored and privileged to be a Santa Barbara City firefighter. Thank you again for recognizing my 25 years of service, and thank you for your continued support for your firefighters.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the other employees who are receiving service award pins this month include Michelle DeCant, who also has 25 years, and she's an administrative analyst in community development; with 20 years, Andrea Bifano, who's a senior rental housing mediation specialist in community development; Catherine Hennebri, who's administrative specialist in police; James Ward, senior electronics communication technician in public works; with 15 years, also from the fire department, Steve Espinoza, who's a fire captain; with 10 years, Randy Ward, who's public works inspector two in public works; and with five years, Yvette Waugh, engineering tech in public works; Andrew Rhodes, water treatment plant control operator in public works; and Jeff Schultz, who's a waterfront maintenance worker in the waterfront.
Item two, letter of recognition for the 70th anniversary of the Santa Barbara Lawn Bowls Club. Lawn bowlers arise. There you go. You want to come on up? Lee Smith, you're going to be accepting? Yeah. Thank you. All of you together, maybe. The ancient sport of lawn bowls has been played by men and women of all ages since the 13th century. Bowling on the green provides healthy competition, mental stimulation, and social interaction for citizens of all ages. Santa Barbara Lawn Bowls Club was established in 1937 and has been sponsored by the Santa Barbara City Parks and Recreation Department ever since. The 70th anniversary occurs on August 11th, 2007. Through the combined efforts of club members and the city of Santa Barbara, the club has offered countless hours of enjoyment to thousands of players and their guests. So we're going to hereby recognize the Santa Barbara Lawn Bowls Club as it celebrates 70 years of providing opportunities to members of the community and encourage citizens to avail themselves of the opportunities offered by both Lawn Bowls Clubs, to learn this fine game, and to enjoy the physical, mental, and social benefits that it provides. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to say I'm the president. My name is Lee Smith, and this is my wonderful vice president, Carol Smith, and then the fellow that's putting together this big bash on Saturday, which all of you have been invited to, and you might even get a chance to bowl. We had one of the Parks and Recreation Commission members agree to bowl and bring his wife, so we hope you'll do it. And then I want to introduce to you George Glarum, who's the chairman of our 70th anniversary and has worked real hard to put a rip-dozer of a program together. And I'd like to say also, instead of painting the city blue, we'd like to paint it red next Saturday. So come. Thank you very much. Now, you want to say a word, too?
Okay.
Thank you for all of the club and the interest you have and the partnership we have with the city to provide recreation. Thanks again.
See you on Saturday, huh?
Yes.
What is the time on Saturday? What time of day?
Well, we're going to eat at 2:00, 2:30, but we're going to have fun before that, so we're going to start the tournament at, maybe if you got there at 10 o'clock, we're going to bowl, and then we're going to have a fun game right after the tournament bowling, which everybody is to participate, including you. And it doesn't take any skill, so that helps.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
And this is downtown?
This is on Saturday of this week.
Is it the downtown bowling?
At De Lavina.
Downtown.
Yes. It's the Santa Barbara Lawn Bowls Club. There is another club in the city, but I kind of forgot the name.
Ladies, if you will, flat shoelace shoes, we'd appreciate it. If we want to get you out on the green, we'll put bowls in your hands. I think you'll have a wonderful time. Great.
Thanks again, all.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us.
I would advise you to come around 12:30, because then the program gets going, and we want to see all there. You hear?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Glarum. Thank you. Okay, change us to the agenda. I think we want to put, we wanted to hear from the fire chief.
After the other public comments, I'd like to ask, I've asked Chief Prince to give you a brief update on the Zaka fire.
Good. Good. Okay. I know several of us have been briefed, but it's good to get the latest. Thank you. We have public comment. Wayne Scholes will be followed by Ken Locke.
Yes, hi. I'm here, just like I was in September, to complain about the lack of progress, the lying and arrogance by Browning Allen and the Transportation Department towards the improvements in safety and pedestrian safety and speed control on Shoreline. In September, when DOS had him come to explain himself for his lack of progress, he told everybody they'd had problems, but it'd be completed in June. It was never completed in June. I've met with Browning several times and talked to him, but the only time I get a hold of him is when I threaten to come down here and tell the council that he's lying again. I've made three phone calls Friday. I've made one phone call Friday, two today to that department, tried to get a hold of him. I know he was out of town Friday. He was here yesterday, and he's here today, and I've not received any phone calls back. And I'd like to get the rest of the city council to get involved in this so we can get this finished and completed. We were promised this almost two years ago. And in the same period of time, the city has found the money to replace the garbage cans on Shoreline Park, which they're doing right now at a cost of $1,633 per garbage can, which at approximately 25 garbage cans, comes to a total of $40,000 and change, plus another $10,000 for installation. We're talking about $50,000 that the city found money to spend so that we could have pretty garbage cans on Shoreline Park. But so far, all we've gotten for our improvements is a painted sidewalk or crosswalks, and that was only the very next day after I was here in September. So if any of you would like to talk to me, you can get my phone number from DOS. I'm sick and tired, and everybody else that's on our petitions, DOS has the petitions, the Transportation Department has it. Seventy-eight people were in the last, were at the last meeting, and every day, everybody asked me what I found out, what's going on about this. And I keep telling them, DOS is involved, nobody else has been. I keep getting ahold of Browning Allen. He tells me things that turn out to not be true, and the answer from the general public is, yeah, we're just being lied to again. If we can spend $1,633 for each garbage can in Shoreline Park, the city council ought to be able to find enough time to get ahold of Browning Allen and tell him to make pedestrian and traffic safety a number-one priority. We had one death up on Cliff Drive recently. We had another vehicle drive right through a house. Luckily, nobody was in there. People are speeding constantly on Shoreline, and we have very little police activity up there because they're so involved with trying to suppress the gang activity for Fiesta. So I would appreciate any of your involvement in this. So far, DOS has been the only one that has. If you don't think the public safety is more important than pretty garbage cans, then I would suggest you guys step down in the next election or the public votes you out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Locke will be followed by Phil Walker.
My name is Kenneth Locke. Claiming to be a Renaissance genius, if you go in the search engine like MSN, I think I'm number three if you put the words Renaissance genius. The genius of the philosophy of aesthetics that includes the fine arts or arts, painting, I explain the whole basis of a complete history of the abstract art movement of the 20th century, also in relation to athletics through tennis. I shared a page with you called "The Genius of Teneissance," and in that, I explain the fact that when you do have a genius, then you have the ability to recognize and determine an individual's level of intelligence based on who they actually refer to as a genius. Now, what I'm claiming to be is the genius of tennis in relation to it being an ambidextrous, non-competitive relationship. If they would refer to somebody who's ambidextrous, non-competitive, I would be the genius. But a person could refer to the likes of Roger Federer, and he's a genius in relation to one arm, based on the fact it's competitive. It's at a lower level of integration, a lower level of intelligence. In this page, again, I mentioned that whole concept. Your intelligence in relation to art, and you know, the prime example, the light blue line, is based on a lack of intelligence, a lack of integrity. You do not have a grasp on art history. I know that because, again, I'm claiming to be the genius, the one who finished and completed that history, so it would require you to actually recognize me and that achievement before you actually start accumulating knowledge which is actually worth keeping. I do make myself available to this community, as I mentioned in the years past, and if there's any communication, you can get me through my email. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Walker, and then the last one would be Rick Goodfree.
Madam Mayor and city council, good to see you again. One postscript to Victor Acosta, well, Victor is not a very outspoken man, but he's been an excellent boss, my boss, for almost 26 years. I've known the man for, oh, since 1966, when we both wound up in the U.S. Army, but we worked the Old Valley House Restaurant. It became, I think, I can't remember the name of the restaurant. It's been several restaurants since then, but Victor is a quiet man that, been an excellent boss, so he's, doesn't jump to conclusion. He's smooth. You couldn't ask for a more honorable man, too. Also, it's good to know that Victor is a decorated Vietnam vet. He's been awarded the Purple Heart, I think a Bronze Star for Valor II, and several other decorations, and he's quite a man. He's been there and done it. Now, I'm going to change pace here. As you all well know, there's, smoke is blowing that way, but there's still considerable drift smoke, high altitude from the Zaka fire. From about 1922 to '32, there were four fires in the Gibraltar drainage that I think they comprised approximately 64 square miles. Zaka fire is now at 109 square miles. In the period up to about 1941, as I remember, Gibraltar lost about 50% of its capacity through siltation. Granted, today, I think most of the siltation will be scoured out if we do get the intense rains sometime after the fire. It might be a dry year. We might get 100 inches. Who knows? It's all speculative. That siltation will pass on through to Kachuma. So eventually, you're going to lose capacity, if more capacity has been lost in Kachuma. Again, I'm bringing up the subject of the D-Sal plant. Let's get a couple steps closer to turning on the key. Why not even opt to put two more stacks of fuel cells at El Stero to power the thing with, or partially power? You can solarize it. Your shallow groundwater basins here and the fuel cell are the only truly sustainable water resources in the city itself, plus the recycle plant. The water expropriated from the San Inez drainage through the water tunnels is taken from a drainage outside the geographical limits of the city, so think about that one.
Okay.
And one other quick thing, again, I'll refer to seismic risk assessment of the critical resources in the city: water filtration plant, El Stero, and the collection and distribution system. It's good to point out that the Cater filtration plant also treats water for the whole South Coast, except for the Goyda district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rick Goodfree will be the last speaker.
Madam Mayor?
Hi.
City council members, I really need your support. We need your support on Bass Street. I've sent some emails to you. I don't know if you've seen them, also a video. And the video doesn't show anything what's happening there with the speed. At night, people are going 60 miles an hour down that road, and it's a one-lane road. And I've sent letters to and calls to city, you know, workers here, the administration, and there's no, not even any speed signs after Mitchell Train on Bass Street. There's one, and there's supposed to be two. Even a policeman told me that there's supposed to be another sign, and they even know that it's missing. And I also talked to Dawn Hingle, and she said she was going to put these signs up, and nothing's happened. This was in, I think, July or June. And then also talked to her about putting up some signs, speed signs, on, you know, I'm just so happy that you guys are listening to me like this is. This is a wonderful feeling, being here. I never thought it would be like this, so I just want to throw that in there. After Ariaga on Bass Street, people are coming off the freeway and then turning on Bath. There's nothing there. So people are used to being on the freeway, and then they're going down Bass Street again, not 30 miles an hour, not 40, 50, 60. There's been so many close calls. I don't know how many accidents there's been, but somebody's going to get killed. I mean, nobody's gotten killed yet, as I know, but there's been so many near misses, it's going to happen. And I just don't want to come here and say, you know what? Last week, somebody got killed. So this is something that we all can work on, and, you know, people say, Rick, you've got to go get petitions, you've got to do this and that. Everybody knows this is a problem, a big safety issue. The other thing I would propose is putting some stop signs. You know, it's like a freeway there, there's no stop signs for a half mile. Garden Street, everywhere on the east side, has all these traffic controls. Santa Barbara, Bass Street, has nothing. Castillo Street also is a one-lane, same problem. So I'm happy to say I almost got stopped by a motorcycle policeman today on De Lavina. They're out there watching right now. So I've had calls to Rich Gloss, and he's going to be helping, too. I think we all need to come together with the Department, the Transportation, people, and police, so there's a lot more I could say, but I'm going to leave it.
Have you already met with Juven Hingle?
I've talked to her. And I've been working with Hillary Allen, and she's frustrated working with her. She's going over her head because nothing's been done.
Okay. Well, we'll see.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you sent me an email right before Fiesta, and I'm sorry I didn't get back to you, but I will.
It's fine.
It's a common issue, and sometimes it's the speed on Ontario, and then the speed goes away on Ontario, and it comes up in Garden, and then it comes up in whatever it is. That's why we have those slow Santa Barbara signs.
Well, I've got one up there.
And I'm sure you do, because I've seen them on there. So we'll work with you and try to figure it out. I'm sorry.
The one thing I want to say is that I've talked to the police, about eight of them, and they all say, you know, we want to do it, but we're understaffed.
No, well, they give lots of citations, too, but that's not going to be the whole answer, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your support.
No, we'll be talking to you and trying to figure it out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no more. Go ahead with, oh, I knew there was something special. Fire chief, come on up. We want to hear what's going on with the Zaka fire.
Thank you, Mayor Bloom, members of council, Ron Prince, fire chief. I just wanted to give you a brief update. I know a lot of you have been at the county EOC, a lot of you have been at the briefings, but I thought it'd be helpful to bring you up to date as of about two hours ago, what's going on with this huge fire, and I appreciate the opportunity. What I'd like to do is just cover briefly some of the stats, some of the current situation status, cover a little bit about the fire management teams that are working on this. In addition, talk about the effort that's going on in the front country in terms of pre-planning. I'd like to also mention some of the public information outlets that are going on and spreading the word about this fire. So just to start off with, I'd like to let everybody know that it is a little over 70,000 acres so far. As of this morning, they were thinking it was 68% contained, and they're holding true, the Forest Service is holding true to the September 7 containment date, and I think that's largely due to the weather that's been cooperating the last few days. The evacuation orders are still in place for Paradise Road, Lower San Inez River Road, Gibraltar Dam, and there are some, I believe the Peachtree community is still under that evacuation order as well. There's almost 2,400 firefighters on the line here, and this is a day-old map that's up on the screen, but it's, it shows to large measure what's been happening since July 4. And this fire, luckily, the last four days, has been actually been pushed to the north. And we had an extreme event, as you all know, Friday, and some heavy winds that finally died down on Saturday, but in the last several days, the pattern has helped, and it's really stopped the southward advancement of this fire, and it's been pushing to the north. But this event, this wind is supposed to die out this evening, and we'll have some light sundowners, maybe 15 miles an hour, nothing significant tonight, but then we'll go back to a northern... But then we'll go back to a nor, I've been told, the normal weather pattern, starting Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Of course, this weather information changes every single day, but right now, the normal weather pattern would suggest that the fire would continue to start to crawl back east and southeast. So we are definitely not out of the woods. And what I'd like to tell you now is what's been going on with respect to some of the activity on the fire line. There've been some, what's called burnout operations. And the Forest Service has been taking advantage of this wind. They've gone down to some dozer lines that they created several weeks ago, and they're trying to burn from those dozer lines back up into the fire itself to create a larger buffer. So if the fire turns directions, we've got just that much more of a buffer of an area that's been burnt out. So today is a big day in the history of this fire for us, because if they're successful with their burnout operations, we'll get probably 2,000 acres more of a buffer. But it's been so wet and humid, it's interesting that they've had a hard time yesterday and today actually getting this backfire burnout operation to work successfully. So you will see some more smoke later this afternoon. But in any case, we've got plenty of resources on this fire, not the least of which is the access to a DC-10, which has been doing some practice runs, and they've been checking out the ridge line, the Comino Cielo line, to target exactly where would be the most appropriate spot to lay literally miles of retardant, if it became necessary. So it's great just to have that kind of resource, because that can do what our hand crews cannot do, which is to do a quick replacement of, and make a fire break within a matter of minutes. So that's good news to have that access through CAL FIRE for that resource. But as far as the fire management goes, the fire's been broken into two large zones. It's gotten so large that the Forest Service has broken it into a north and a south zone. The base camp there, it's, Live Oak will stay as the south zone, Incident Command Post, and then they'll be at, I believe it's Richardson, yeah, Richardson.
Richardson Camp.
Camp, I believe. Then Kwayuma is the north zone for, and they have Incident Command Team up there. They've also got a third team that's being put together right here specifically for the front country, and that's CAL FIRE's leading that. And there's 300 firefighters at Earl Warren right now, and they're camped there, they're actually going out into the community right now. In the city limits alone, we've got four strike teams, which is about, that's what, 20 engine companies, between 192 and the front country in the city limits, checking out road accessways, talking to residents, just getting familiar with what the evacuation routes would be. So they're getting prepared for worst-case scenario, which is if this fire literally does a 180 in the next few days to a week. Again, the weather's really been cooperative, but I, because of the potential for winds changing directions, we're not out of the woods, and I'm really appreciative of having that kind of resource, the access to those types of resources. One of the things that we'll be doing tomorrow is we're having a meeting with our police department and public works folks to talk about their role in an evacuation and how we can, we have these trigger points that are set up, and right now, it's all based on the wind, but right now, a trigger point would be for an evacuation warning for the residents in our front country would be if the fire got within a mile of the riverbed, north of the riverbed. The evacuation order would take place if the fire got, actually reached the north edge of the San Ynez River bed. So, and again, it's, it could be, those are just trigger points that are part of a planning process. If the wind's blowing really strong, we'll be issuing those evacuation orders sooner than later. And it is interesting and ironic that we've had the evacuation drill just a few months ago, and a lot of the residents up there have a sense of what it means to be ready to evacuate. But I'm hoping through all the great job that the media's done over the last few days that the rest of the residents up in the front country are learning and thinking about that same thing, getting their head in the game in terms of what it really means to evacuate and be ready to move quickly. And it's a painful thought process to go through, but it's incredibly helpful. And one council member knows exactly what that felt like about, it was almost 20 years ago, or over 20 years ago. Councilmember Horton was in Sycamore Canyon. So we're hoping to avoid that kind of situation, but again, we've got incredible cooperation from the county, from the Forest Service, from the state. And it's been really gratifying to work and see the activity in the County Emergency Operating Center. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting and watching every day to see if we should open up our EOC. And luckily, so far, we haven't got into that position. We're ready to open up our EOC within 45 minutes, though, should the decision be made. Let's see. With our, as you know, as far as public information goes, there's kiosks set up here at City Hall and at the Mission. There's six more kiosks got opened up today, all around the South Coast, trying to let people know what the current status is on a every 24-hour update. There've been briefings going on at about five different levels, all day long, every day, with fire folks, with the County EOC folks. PAOs have been meeting, and it's been a really incredible effort. And I suppose the last thing I'd just like to leave you with is a legitimate and final word of caution, and that is that, you know, it wouldn't take more than a couple days of bad weather to have us be back right in the situation we were last Friday, where it looked incredibly scary, and rightly so. Obviously, we had a lot of ash and smoke in the city, and we're hoping to avoid that situation. So it's almost hour-by-hour situation right now. We have a little bit of breather, but we are definitely keeping vigilant, and we'll keep you informed if anything changes in any significant way.
Yeah, I've been really impressed by the, everybody's working together so well. State, even federal officials are out there, and county, and the cities, and all the jurisdictions. It's been really wonderful. The radio stations that we have angst about in the past seem to have stepped up to the plate in a beautiful way.
Absolutely.
Okay. I thought that was true, and it's really been good.
All the media's done a super job.
Yeah, and the TV stations, too. And you can Google, you know, like KEYT, and you can get the latest on there. So all of that is just wonderful for people.
Yeah, they've done a really great job.
Yeah. And can I ask, the 211 that we've told people to call, has that been, do we update that, or is that not yet going for the South County?
It has been going, and I can't tell you the last day it got updated. We tried to hook them up with Insaweb, which is the latest information that everybody's been accessing.
Yeah.
But I haven't looked at it this morning. I actually called a couple times just to test it, to see if it was actually working as well as I thought it, and I've been telling everybody. And actually, it was incredible. There was, the person there that answered the phone actually read off the website, gave me the latest information, the latest evacuation orders. I haven't called it today, and I haven't looked at the website today, but it's my understanding they are keeping it current.
Well, and Insaweb is a good choice, too, for people. I-N-C-I-W-E-B. It shows a neat map, and, you know, people like me who need information, it's really good.
That is one of the best sources of information.
Yeah, and then, of course, channels 18, 19, and 20, too, are all on a scroll, and it's really good. So, great. Okay, Ms. Falconi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I know that the mayor and I were at the briefing and the press conference on Saturday. I was there at the 11 o'clock this morning. And yesterday, Helene and I were on a conference call with the governor's office, just really, it was, there were so many folks on that conference call, it was extraordinary. There was Feinstein's office, Lois Kaps's office, as the federal government, both of our state legislators, representatives from the city, and the county fire, the sheriff, our police, U.S. Forestry, California Division of Forestry. I mean, the resources that are being brought to bear on this wildland fire is really quite extraordinary. The teams that are out at Earl Warren, where I went just about at 1 o'clock, just before this meeting, to just say hi to the folks who are here from all over the state. What they're doing, as you mentioned, is the city has, well, the South Coast has been sectioned off into quadrants, if you want to call them that. And these teams that are here from all over the state are basically taking an area, a neighborhood, they're learning the ins and outs, the neighborhood, the streets, so that they can go in and they can get people. And so folks need to know that there are a tremendous number of folks working on it, but there is one plan. There is one unified, coordinated plan that everybody has bought into, that everybody knows about, that everybody's participating in. So it's not like you're going to have right-hand, left-hand, not knowing what's going on. Everybody is at the one table with the one plan. And I think people can take a lot of comfort in that and to know that they're not alone, that it's not going to be scattershot, heaven forbid this thing does happen. But I really want to impress upon folks that although that's in place, and it's in place right now, whether it gets triggered or not depends on a whole variety of different things. But people need to be prepared themselves, because there are power lines on the backside of the mountain that could affect our power if they are compromised. And so you need to be prepared with all of your stuff that you need if the power goes out. If an evacuation happens, you need to have a list of what you would take, and where you would go, and where you would meet your family. So there are a couple of affirmative things that people can really do to plan for some contingencies. Now, hopefully, at the end of the day, this will all have been a really elaborate drill, but the fire back there is real. It could shift with the wind. We're sort of at Mother Nature's mercy, but we're doing everything in our coordinated power to really make sure that if certain things happen, we have plans in place. And people need to take those steps to make themselves as prepared as possible. But at the end of the day, you won't be alone. So understand that, too. I'm really incredibly proud of everybody watching this work. It has been really an amazing learning experience, and to be part of it, I mean, I'm so proud with everybody's professionalism and dedication, and people don't sleep. It's amazing. So we're in good, we're in good hands, considering the circumstances.
Okay, Ms. Horton?
Ron, I saw some video on the DC-10, which was really impressive. And I'm just wondering if you could say when that would be used and what the limitations, if any, might be. I guess it can't fly at night, and I don't know if they can fly in a, I'm thinking if it comes this way, there's going to be heavy winds, and I don't know what the situation is or how low they can fly. What would be the usage of that tool?
Well, yeah, Mayor Bloom, Councilmember Horton. I'm not, we have a pilot in our midst who could probably get technical with what its limitations are with respect to wind, but the DC-10 will deliver about 26,000 gallons of fire retardant, and it's, that's about a three-mile swath at once. And it's a very powerful aircraft, but as you probably saw, or maybe not, just as recently as a few months ago, it dropped a load of fire retardant and actually landed in the tops of some trees and barely narrowly escaped. So I think the pilots are going to be conservative, but that's why they've been flying this area for the last several days, to get real comfortable with the thermal currents, with the terrain. And the best application absolutely for that aircraft is the Ridge Stop, the Comino Cielo. That's perfectly set up, a straight shot for laying along fire line. It's, and perhaps the city administrator can talk about the effects of the wind on an aircraft that size, but I'm confident that unless it's the absolute most extreme sundowners, I think it would be very effective laying fire retardant. And actually, it's about an hour turnaround time for Victorville, where it's stationed. So we could probably lay close to 10 miles of fire line in three hours. And that would be a pretreatment of the fuels in advance of the fire actually getting there.
How long will that last, then?
Well, it's actually like a wet concrete material. It'll last for days.
Wow. Very interesting. That's besides the helicopters and the other planes that you already have working. What is it, eight helicopters or something like that?
Actually, yeah.
Planes or whatever.
To be exact, it's, I believe, it's, I've got it here, it's, you've got a lot of fixed wing. You've actually got 16 helicopters.
Oh, wow.
Eight air tankers and two air attack, which is like the Incident Command platform up in the air.
And I had heard this is the largest fire, I think this was at yesterday's briefing, the largest fire in California history, bigger than the day fire.
If it's not, it's going to be soon.
It is going to be, yeah, yeah.
Can I add something just on that one point with the DC-10? This morning at the briefing, the gentleman from the California Division of Forestry, I believe, he said that another application for the DC-10, which has been cleared to be used in federal, on federal lands, which usually is not the case. The feds won't let you do it, so we had to get a waiver for it. But another application, not just the preventative and trying to help with the power lines in Comino Cielo, but they're looking at whether or not they can actually use it on the fire line itself.
The front edge, right.
And how is that going? Because they're trying to, that finger that you saw, the southern edge, they're thinking maybe they can lay some, lay some retardant down in there.
I just got off the phone with folks from the Forest Service, a liaison officer, and that was something that they were still debating, if they were going to actually do a run today to try to either hit the front edge of the fire or maybe just a few yards off of that. And again, the terrain is so extreme back there, they need to pick an opportunity where they can be the most effective. And when the hills are going up and down like this, it's, they'll end up being some gaps. So they have to pick the right spot. But as recently as about two hours ago, they were, the debate was going on whether they're going to do some runs. They actually did use it on the fire a couple days ago in some practice runs, and it is, it's impressive to watch. But they have to be real careful, though.
Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. I think they did use the DC-10 in the day fire last year, which
Yes, they did.
It was a big, significant issue of how that fire went out. So I look forward to seeing it here. I also just want to, you know, thank everyone involved and don't want to repeat everything that's been said, but add my ditto to it, and just how incredibly coordinated everything is. And also our own non-fire department staff who are part of this, Nina Johnson, Betty Wies, and John Ledbetter, who've been giving us brief, go to the briefings. People are ready to go if we ever needed to open our EOC. And everyone has their role, which is really important and right on target. The other piece I've noticed, certainly expanding the media, has been really helpful for people who need to get information. I'm noticing our own city website right on the homepage, so santabarbreca.gov. You can click on to a number of different sources. You can go to the county website. We, I think all of us received an email from someone concerned that since there was a Montecito community meeting last night, that something different's happening. And first, my understanding is no, that's not the case. It just happened to be a community meeting. And frankly, I would think we would want everyone's time and energy spent on the plan and monitoring the fire, and go to the website for updated information. Are there any other, besides Insaweb and our city website, the county website, that people could go to if they wanted? Channel 20's been repeating a lot of, the N-18's been repeating a lot of the press conferences.
Yeah, that's correct. They're repeating the press conferences. And the information is so dynamic, Councilmember Schneider. It is good to go to those websites and the TV, and the media's just been incredible. They've been updating their information on a real regular basis. So those are some of the best sources. Of course, the city's website has been updated daily, and Nina agreed. Nina and John and Betty, during the weekend, they've all done just a great job, and we continue to have a presence there. It'll probably pick up again in a couple days. We'll need to go back. And they're actually talking about moving the EOC and some of the operations over to the UCSB campus. And they're doing a lot of contingency planning, but this has been an incredible opportunity for us and the county to exercise all these plans and to look at the staffing, look at the roles people play. And it's, I wouldn't call it a drill, but it certainly has been a great opportunity to make sure that our systems are in place. And I think, you know, we can tell the community that we are doing everything possible, not only with our cooperators and our partners in this, but internal city staff is really doing a great job. So I'm impressed as well.
Well, thank you. And I just, I guess one other piece, this conversation we just have is now streaming live on our city website, and will be there in the archives, and people can click on if they wanted to hear this again. And I know there are other media outlets, and so I guess we should get you back to work and, unless there are other questions, but thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. House has something in there.
Just a couple more things, please. How are firefighters doing from our particular force?
Well, they're
They've got a lot going.
Yeah, they do. Our firefighters, we've got about 24 active, not only on this incident, but some actually in Idaho, so part of an overhead team. But of the 2,400 or so firefighters, they do a two-week stint where they're working 12-hour shifts, and they take 12 hours off. And then after two weeks, they're let off for two days, and then they can be reassigned. I think you could tell, if you looked at some of the conferences, press conferences and whatnot this last weekend, that some are getting very tired. And it's great that they've got a chance to spell themselves this last few days and take a little respite. But no, they're, this is what it's all about, though. These folks, they have an adrenaline rush that'll go on for weeks, and they're really doing a great job. But they definitely needed a little bit of a rest, and this last, this break in the weather's been fantastic.
Just two more quick things. One, with all this focus on the fire on the other side of the hill, I want to commend you for the quick response and the success of knocking down that house fire in Riviera. you for the quick response and the success of knocking down that house fire in Riviera. And some of us don't live too far from there. And it's the second time we've had a, in the past couple of years, a major conflagration right there that could very well have gotten out of hand. And kudos to everyone who was involved in how quickly and professionally that was taken care of.
I'll pass that on.
And then lastly, we've got a lot of folks who are here helping us out from out of the area because of this disagreement to share these resources. Is there anything that the community can do or would be appropriate for us to do to show appreciation or to be able to offer them any, you know, lemonade or something? But I mean, more substantial than that, anything, because these, these folks are here to really help us out and we really do appreciate it. And at least the kind word could certainly be extended, but maybe there's something else we can do.
Well, historically, with an incident of this size, and what's really appreciated is when the incident's all over, a proclamation from the council to the various agencies that assisted is something that, believe it or not, will get sent to a main agency and get copied and goes to all the fire stations. And it's something that's sort of a badge of honor. And I think that certainly is, it may seem symbolic, but it's really appreciated by all the jurisdictions that participate. As far as helping the logistical and care and feeding of these folks, trust me, they're being fed very well. And, but they, they do know that we appreciate them. But I think in the aftermath, an official proclamation would be really appreciated.
Okay, well, midstream, thank you very much goes right back to him. Thank you very much for your work.
That's great. That's easy to do and we'll do it right after and hope it's tomorrow. Hope it gets put out tomorrow, huh? Okay. Thank you very, I know it's not tomorrow, but thank you very much for coming in and you're so busy. Okay, now we'll go to the consent calendar. You have a couple of things to read by title only.
Item four, adoption of ordinance to extend time period for redevelopment agency eminent domain recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending ordinance numbers 3566, 3923, 4438, 4894, 5098, 5089, 5314, 5363, and 5388. And approving and adopting the proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan for the central city redevelopment project. And item seven, adoption of ordinance for Federal Aviation Administration agreement recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a memorandum of agreement dated August 7, 2007, between the city of Santa Barbara and the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, for all navigation equipment at the Santa Barbara Municipal Airport.
Okay, that's reading by title only without objection. We'll wait for the reading. We have, remember, the public that would like to speak on item number five. Go ahead and read the title of that. Mr. Locke?
Art from Scrap Contract for Youth Watershed Education Programs.
Okay.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I think I spoke in relation to the art from scrap in the past. This is a educational program, watershed. I don't know if it has anything to do with art. I don't think so. But the, as I mentioned, I think back in a past public comment, I brought up the concept of recycling art. The basis of recycling art in relation to education and the children is actually we understand the work of Jackson Pollock. Jackson Pollock provides the means for us to understand art, to how it is currently understood in relation to being an exercise, allows the kids to actually have a physical, metaphysical relationship with the creation, again, of art that we can refer to as a spiritual. There's been writing. The, and then once they, they participate in that painting and create an object, the object is actually a secondary, it's secondary. Primarily is that the children have the, the opportunities to exercise that, again, physical, metaphysical in relation to the contribution that Jackson Pollock has made to the art community, in relation to the, I explain, in relation to the avant-garde, in relation to, again, the 20th century abstract. From the perspective of art from scrap is they're, they don't, they're not functioning at that level of intelligence. It doesn't go there type of thing. I think I mentioned before, we should have art from, say, science from scrap. We should introduce to children so they could take some of the scrap and then apply it to science as well as integrate the children in relation to being an artist and scientist both. That's where the higher level of intelligence is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move consent.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to Finance Committee. Mr. Horton?
We met today at 1:00 to discuss workers' comp and other insurance policies for the city. And I'm pleased to report the Finance Committee heard some great information that our rates are going to be reduced substantially. And part of that deals with the way the city addresses workers' comp cases. So we're very pleased to report that.
That's right. Good. Thank you. Item number 11, please.
Infrastructure Financing Task Force.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, last spring, when we presented the six-year capital improvement plan, we had changed the format dramatically and we had also changed the plan to start identifying unfunded projects. To refresh your memory, the total six-year plan that we presented to the council included $441 million of capital projects for the next six years. And before I talk about the unfunded projects, I want to talk a little about what's funded because I think it's important to remember that we do have a lot of projects that we are funding in the next six years. Those include, of course, the airfield safety project, which is underway, and the terminal expansion projects where we have identified all the funding. In light of the recent bridge catastrophe in Minneapolis, I wanted to mention that we have $30 million of bridge replacements scheduled over the next six years, all of which we have already identified the funding. That includes not only the Cabrillo Bridge over Mission Creek, I think most of you are aware of, which is nearly $20 million, but the Hayley de Lavina Bridge over Mission Creek, which is another $10 million that's scheduled to be done. We've also scheduled the over $25 million of improvements to the Cater Treatment Plant, and that's on top of the $20 million of improvements we've just completed there. We've scheduled over $20 million to El Estero and our sewer system, and that's on top of almost $20 million of improvements we've just completed at El Estero. And we've also got $10 million of improvements at the harbor scheduled for the next six years. However, we do have a significant gap of projects that are not funded. We identified in the report about $146 million. And as I've said several times, I think that number is probably on the low side because in many cases, the departments haven't identified some projects because they just felt the funding wasn't forthcoming. The major area where we have a funding deficiency is in those projects that are related to the general fund for departments that don't have any outside funding sources. And the biggest, of course, are the police department and police headquarters, what we're calling now Phase Two of the Fire Headquarters Project. There's a number of parks and recreation projects, both facility enhancements as well as rehabilitation in parks and recreation facilities. And then although we have a pretty good funding source with Measure D and the utility tax, we still have a number of projects in the transportation area that, that will need to be addressed. I think it's important to note that this is not a unique problem to Santa Barbara. In fact, as I look at our, the current state of our infrastructure, it's probably in better condition than most cities in California. But now is the time to start dealing with the issue before it gets worse. Generally, in the United States and in California, over the last, really, in the last 20 years, funding for infrastructure has declined as a result of a number of reasons. The federal government discontinued revenue sharing, which used to be a pretty reliable source of funding for, for capital improvements. The state, because of their budget problems, has cut back and, of course, for many years was, had reduced funding to cities. And then just, and then gas tax has not been increased significantly. And of course, the price of gas, the price of asphalt is directly related to the price of gasoline. And if you have a fixed percent gas tax, it doesn't track inflation. And so gas tax receipts that we receive from the states have, in inflation terms, have been in decline for some, for many years. We have, went to the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago and are recommending that the council establish what we're calling the Infrastructure Financing Task Force. We're recommending that it be composed of seven individuals. And among their duties would be to not only just look at the capital issues, but look at our overall budgeting techniques, how we plan for capital improvements, look at alternative financing strategies, invite folks in from other agencies that have identified these kinds of issues, and help to recommend to the city council a variety of action steps that can be taken to start addressing the problem. The types of people that we think you would want, or we would want to have on this committee would be folks that have some experience in municipal finance and capital planning, capital markets and long-term debt financing, environmental issues, because clearly, when we make capital improvement, or do a capital improvements, it has an impact on the environment. Public outreach and participation because whether we like it or not, at some point, this is going to cost the public more money and we need to deal with that issue honestly and upfront. When we talked with the Finance Committee about the appropriate way to select the members of this task force, we had a lively discussion. We think that some of the people that we would want to get on this committee are the types of people that we, we're going to have to go out and solicit them for the committee and ask them to be on it. And so the, the recommended approach that the Finance Committee and I am recommending to the full council is that, that you allow Councilmember Horton, as chair of the Finance Committee, and myself to do a solicitation process. We would do our normal public solicitation process, but then we would interview candidates. We would actually go out and also solicit people to serve on the committee and then recommend to the Finance Committee and then the full council, a slate of seven members for the committee. We think that process would, would work and allow us to really go out and do some outreach. We think that this process, once the committee's established, would take six to nine months. I will be assigning staff from our office and we'll also have staff from the Finance Department and Public Works to staff the committee and help them in their deliberations and bring information to them. So that's what we're proposing. Again, this is, in my opinion, it's a long-term, this is not a quick fix. It's taken 20 to 30 years to get where we are and it's going to take a long time to get out of it. But I think good cities and well-managed cities address these issues and start dealing with them before it becomes a crisis. And now's a good time to start dealing with it.
I think sometimes we vote for these big bond issues, which we do for infrastructure, and we think that's, that'll take care of it all. But they're so expensive to do even one project that that big bond measure just doesn't quite cover it all.
Yeah, and I think in some ways, people voted for the state bond issue and thought, okay, now we've solved the problem. And it's just the tip of the iceberg statewide and even in our, in our city.
That's right. Well, that's innovative way. I presume that you will take us any ideas that we have, too?
Sure.
Okay.
Like, I think we've already received some.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. We have some ideas here. We have opinions. That's how we get elected. Mr. House?
I'm not going to offer much in terms of opinions or anything like that except one in it, is I really appreciate your taking this on this way. We've talked about this since I came on council. You've been working on it since way before. Others on council have been concerned about it and shown interest in this. We've taken our budget issues and internal structure very seriously and taken this in a, in a step-by-step fashion, knowing that this is, this is something that we need to do. Our, our capital program addresses the needs in their priority and it's a, it's a robust, strong, sturdy program that's been delivering results directly to the benefit of the public. And so I think there, any misunderstanding about our doing this needs to be addressed straight up. And this is proactive. This is something that is built up over a long period of time and the communities that don't take a moment to address it and take maybe, set up a structure like this are just going to be in, in real trouble. And we're not one of those. And so, Mr. Armstrong, under your guidance, I very much appreciate this, this approach and I think that you're on the right track. And I do appreciate the Finance Committee and Mr. Horton and your idea of reaching out into the community and not just hoping that, you know, the magical right team sort of shows up, but just really beat the bushes and see who is out there that can bring that kind of expertise that we need. And that's all. I just want to thank you very much for this.
Okay, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. It was a lively discussion, good discussion at Finance Committee. And I think, assuming we all approve this, Mr. Horton and Mr. Armstrong's going to be very busy for the next few weeks in, in talking with people. We mentioned the, the state bonds and, you know, you passed that and you think everything's done. How important it is to have local control over the dollars. Because not only with the state bonds, as we know, it's good to have, but it's such a competitive process and there are lots of need all over the state. I think that emphasizes what Mr. Armstrong's saying, how we're not unique in, in the needs to upgrade our infrastructure because of the competition that we're seeing for those dollars on a statewide level. So to have a group of experts locally here, both in terms of capital planning, on finance, on, and also public outreach and getting the voters, because they're going to have to approve any kind of, you know, not any kind, but many different options that would require voter approval, getting that public outreach there and knowing what the environmental impacts are and so forth is very important. Just thinking, the two PINS, the staff that we had for PINS talking about, you know, our basic public health and safety and also our infrastructure, and we need the employees to do that, but if they don't have the equipment and if we don't have the, the stuff in place, then there's not so much we can do individually so, or as a, as a group of employees. So I'm really looking forward to this. It's a great proactive step. I appreciate Mr. Armstrong's leadership in, in this process. And I have some names, of course, we'll, we'll forward it on and see what, what comes out of it. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. Couple of things, you know, it's, to follow up on, on the issue of the state is that the state will also, although we pass these things statewide, the state legislature will also eke it out on their own timetable. And they will also take or commandeer some of that money. So not all of the money that people pass in these various statewide bonds even get to the local level. It really is sort of parsed out and eked out. And one of the classic examples of that is currently in the 1B money that we just passed for transportation. We were supposed to get $2 billion for cities and counties right at the start of the whole thing. And the legislature decided to, oh, well, we're only going to give them $1 billion. And then they've set conditions and so forth. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we have to do on the ground that although we have these things that we've passed, doesn't mean we're necessarily getting the funding to do them all, especially all at the same time. That's just never going to happen. The other thing is, as you said, it's this, this has been incremental and I don't want people to think that we have structures out there that are used for park and recreation or facilities that are rented or so forth that are about to fall down. I mean, nothing is in such a state of disrepair that we would never let it get that far. So these are, are a list of, of capital improvements that are really on a, on a prioritized schedule to some degree already because we never really let things go to complete deterioration. Now, as far as the wastewater and the water is concerned, we had to comply with unfunded state mandates, basically, because there's clean water and there's sewage water. Improvements in terms of cleanliness and so forth, which is all good, but the regulations come down without the dollars attached. So that's why we have to foot the bill for a $20 million bond here, a $20 million bond there, da-da-da-da-da-da. So I'm very pleased that the city's engaging in this proactive, very affirmative, look see at exactly what it is we have and exactly what it is these facilities need, and then how do we go about funding them in the best, least expensive way, although everything costs a great deal of money. We have nothing that is in such a state of disrepair that anything is going to fall down. I mean, that's just, people need to know that and understand that. So I'm happy to help in any way, but I have full confidence in Mr. Horton, Mr. Armstrong, to go out there and get a, a really swell group of committed folks to help us out. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Okay, Mr. Horton?
Well, I'm looking forward to receiving the recommendations from all of you folks and others in the community as well. And having said that, I'd like to move recommendations A and B of the staff.
A second.
Okay. Mr. Burnwell, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just a question.
Sure.
Where's Max Fleishman when you need him, huh?
I know. Good question.
I have a question about the facilities that we don't have, that we think we might want to have. And I have been a proponent for quite a while, specifically now of Parks and Rec, of a master plan for our parks. We, not only do we have older buildings in them, but we have older layouts and placement of those buildings within the parcels. So I asked the question, or I proposed the question to the gang of seven who's going to put this thing together. Can we look at that? Can we talk about what would an updated McKenzie Can we talk about what would an updated McKenzie Park, Pershing Park, you know, name it, La Mesa Park, for example, maybe an underutilized, underused park? But I can't stress enough my own personal feelings that our parks are designed, not only built out in need of repair, but designed from the '30s and the '40s. And I think we need to look at what we can do to bring them up to date. I think of the tennis courts along the Highway 101. At one time, packed with people, frequently used, and a little bit of a caveat to Ms. Falcone, there are some things over there that can't be used anymore, they're near falling down, the bathroom over there, for example. But then the rise of other sports that have kind of displaced some of the focus of the old-timey sports. Skateboarding is a good one. So when we look at repairing what we have, I think we should also talk about what it is we also want to add to that parks infrastructure. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, if I may. You mentioned Max Fleishman.
Yeah.
So, but it just actually, I was looking at the list of things here that are going to be discussed, and let's just say if there were a billionaire or so that wanted to contribute to the effort, wanted to participate somehow in Parks and Rec, saw some opportunity, saw something, you know, maybe instead of being kind of complaining about this isn't right and that's not right, maybe they wanted to like chip in, participate, maybe own some of that or participate with that. Is this going to address that at all? Would there be, would that maybe be an opportunity that we would talk about public participation in that? Because in a way, in the city of Santa Barbara, a lot of the things that we hold near and dear, you know, really came from a very generous philanthropic community.
It's the Peabody Stadium.
I know, I know it may be small compared to the large issue, but can that be part of, one of the things in the list?
Let me, I'll address both the comments first. My dream would be, quite honestly, that we would have master plans for all of our major capital components. In water and wastewater now, we have 10-year master plans and we update them every five years, but we really need that for the drainage system, we need it for the transportation system, we need it for the parks facilities, we need it for our public facilities. And then once you have those plans, then you start looking for funding sources, including private philanthropy, because as you said, in our history, that's been a huge source of funding. I think in the Parks and Recreation area, I think because we've been putting out fires and really just maintaining facilities and not a lot of enhancements, we haven't gone to that next step. I think, you know, in the discussions with the National Guard Army though, is a good example where we have, we have said, hey, let's look for private funding there, make that a community effort to do that. And I think that's a logical expectation out of this process, is that we, one, we start having a dream list and we also have a master plan of where we want to go. And then we look at all options for funding and I think that's certainly got to be one in this community that we look at.
Thank you so much for taking that, my comment seriously, because I, there's a lot of new folks in Santa Barbara who haven't been around for a long time and they've been maybe looking for ways to participate and get involved and, you know, contribute. And for us to have those kinds of master plans and then show the community where they could contribute and participate, I think that would be really a great thing. And I think it would also go a long way for them to feel like they're part of the community and not just on the outside and, you know, concerned about how things are going, they could be part of the solution. Anyway, thank you very much.
That's really good. Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's really good. Thank you so a lot. Item number 12, please.
Response to grand jury report regarding affordable housing.
Okay, Mr. Falsted, is this yours?
Madam Mayor?
Looks like it.
Yes. I'm Stephen Falsted, the city's housing program supervisor, and together with Betty Wies, the city planner, we crafted a draft response to the grand jury's recent report. They've made several reports this year, but the civil grand jury made one that we need to respond to now, and it was called Affordable Housing in Santa Barbara County: Myth or Reality? It was addressed to the county as well as the eight incorporated cities within the county and the city housing authority, as well as the county housing authority, all of whom are required to respond in writing to each of the findings and recommendations in the report. So as I said, staff has drafted a response letter from the mayor and council, and we are looking for your response and any edits and authorization for the mayor to sign it on behalf of the council. All in all, the report was positive. It had some very nice things to say about the city's affordable housing programs in the preliminary comments, et cetera. And they also had a series of several findings, as well as recommendations. The findings, which they said, and we either have to agree or disagree with them, one was that funding to subsidize affordable housing is limited and is not keeping place with the, pace with the increased costs of developing, you know, the development in land, and of course, that's very true. Another finding, there are varying degrees of public and local government support of affordable housing programs across jurisdictions. Nonprofit organizations play an important role in affordable housing programs, and regional housing needs numbers have not been met in most jurisdictions. And this is something that I'd like to spend a little time discussing. I know you're all familiar with the RENA allocation process. It's the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Process, and I'll give a little background. The State Department of Housing and Community Development allocates, they look at what the needs are, the projected needs for housing in the state to meet what they think are going to be the demand for new housing units in a period of time. And they look at this by income group, either very low income, low income, moderate income, or everything else, especially market rate units. And they also allocate this then by the counties. And then the counties, and we do it through our Santa Barbara County Association of Governments with, where we participate, SB CAG. SB CAG allocates these numbers to the various cities and the unincorporated county area. And then the cities are mandated to incorporate these RENA numbers into their housing elements. And in fact, we have to have our housing element certified by the state, and it won't be certified unless the city shows that the projected needs, as reflected in these RENA allocations, can be accommodated. Now, that's a very important concept. It doesn't say that these housing units will be provided. It's that we have to show that we don't have governmental restraints, tight zoning, and other impediments to someone who wants to come and provide this housing. We have to show that we have zoning capacity and available sites for this. And that's especially true for the market rate housing. I mean, we have to review and approve the housing as consistent with our policies and our zoning, but we don't have to go get developers to come in and build the units, we just have to show that the capacity is there. Now, however, for very low, low, and moderate income, the city does play an important role. That's because this housing would never get built without a lot of assistance in various forms, especially in financial subsidies. So I say, what has the city done since 2001? 2001 is the start of the current RENA allocation period, the target which goes from 2001 to 2008. So we haven't finished that yet. But since 2001, here's a table which shows the 12 projects that have provided units for very low income and low income persons. And total, we have financed 386 very low income and low income units and provided grants and loans to these 12 projects to the tune of $32.8 million. So that's a substantial contribution, substantial commitment on the part of the city to assist these affordable housing projects where never possible. But there's a discrepancy between the city production and the RENA numbers. The regional housing needs assessment for very low and low income units in Santa Barbara City was 957 units. And as I just said, we actually produced so far in that period, 386 units. The grand jury report characterizes this as a shortfall, and I'm not sure that's an accurate characterization. I mean, it's true that there's a difference, but there wasn't a stated mandate to produce those numbers. And in fact, when we look at a shortfall, let's look at the subsidy shortfall. Recently, in the last couple of years, each one of those low income, very low income units has required a city subsidy of about $120,000. And that's really just a part of the picture, because many of these projects also have relied on low income housing tax credits that are allocated through the state. For instance, the 51-unit project at 617 Garden Street by the housing, by the Santa Barbara Mental Health Association, has received $7 million in low income housing tax credits. Would not have been possible without that $7 million, plus the $5.1 million that the city provided. So if we just look at the city's portion here and see what subsidy would have been required to meet, to be able to provide an extra 571 units, that's a shortfall of $68 million in available subsidies. And that is money that are, it's just not available. I mean, in fact, the $32 million, we had to save up for that for many years for some of those projects. And the grand jury acknowledged this. They know that the subsidy sources are shrinking and that sort of thing. But the letter contains this language, and I think it's true. The shortfall speaks more to the unrealistic magnitude of the RENA allocations than to any shortfall in the city's performance. Now, is, in addition to the findings, there's a series of recommendations, and the city has to respond to each of these, and each of the jurisdictions do, with the question of whether they're going to implement these recommendations, whether they already have implemented the recommendations, or whether they feel that they're not going to implement the recommendations for various reasons. One of the recommendations is that jurisdictions should address the full range of housing needs rather than relying on one type of program. And the city's response in your draft letter is, the city has implemented this recommendation. And the reason is that we've provided for many different types. One is the, that through the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, we're providing for middle-income first-time homebuyers who work on the South Coast. Now, admittedly, that's just a small fraction of the need, but we are not relying on one type of program. And in fact, we're continuing to look at ways to strengthen our affordable housing programs. And next week, I'll be before you with a series of recommendations that have been crafted through the Housing Policy Steering Committee and the Planning Commission for revisions to strengthen the Inclusionary Housing Program. We've also had programs that target low-income seniors, mentally ill clients at risk of homelessness, low-income downtown workers, and low-income families that need two, three, and four-bedroom units. So that's an example of the varying types of programs. Another grand jury recommendation is that we should focus more on very low and low-income housing. When I say "we," I mean, this was a recommendation that was not crafted for the city of Santa Barbara, it was crafted for each of the, all of the jurisdictions together. And our response again is, the city has implemented this recommendation. Again, 386 units since 2001, nearly $33 million in city subsidies. And another recommendation, the city should work with successful nonprofits. And again, the city has implemented this recommendation. Since 2001, you have approved loans and grants to the city housing authority, Laguna Cottages, Transition House, People's Self-Help Housing, Mercy Housing California, Habitat for Humanity, the Santa Barbara Mental Health Association, Santa Barbara Community Housing Corporation, and others. Now, I've already heard from a couple of council members with proposed revisions and I'm sure will love to hear any other ideas. With the council's direction, we'll incorporate this in the letter as well. This is very true. The area median income is set countywide, but there are really two distinct housing markets with distinct demographics between them, between the South County and the North County. The needs are increasing, but the resources aren't only not keeping up, they're shrinking.
Yeah.
And in fact, the Section 8 program and community development block grant funding are really under attack by the current federal administration. And I think the Congress is resisting cuts in those programs, but they really are under attack, they're being targeted, and it's a very serious concern. Another serious concern is that by operation of law, our city's redevelopment agency will expire in 2015. And that's going to have a huge impact on our affordable housing programs. The law allows us to still, to collect limited tax increment just for the purpose of repaying existing housing debt. And in anticipation of that, we have issued bonds, and that was a big source of funding on some of our recent projects, through the redevelopment agency. But it's something that we really have to pay attention to as well. And also, there's a typo on page six, number three, which we will fix. And then, and also a comment about being sure that we coordinate our response with the city's housing authority, and we have been in contact and shared our draft ideas with them, and so you can be assured that we're taking that to heart as well. So in conclusion, the title of the report is Affordable Housing in Santa Barbara County: Myth or Reality? And I can say that the city of Santa Barbara, together with many dedicated partners, has been working hard for the past 30 years to make affordable housing in our city a reality. So as I said, Betty Wies is here, and if you have any questions or comments, this would be great.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Falsted. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you for that good report. And it was last week, I believe, the city housing authority reviewed and adopted their version, their response. So that was on last week's agenda. I guess I'm going to start with a question, because I have a different interpretation of the same thing you wrote in here in terms of saying yes or no to a recommendation. And it's recommendation number two, it's on page four of the draft letter. When we say we will, have implemented, or we don't plan to implement, does the implementation have to be exactly what the recommendation is? And I say it in that way because the recommendation says, at least annually, each jurisdiction should hold informational community meetings to explain all aspects of its affordable housing program. The draft response says, we don't plan to do it because we do all these other things. I would actually say, we are implementing it in a slightly different and more comprehensive manner. Because, and then you list a variety of ways, our redevelopment budget hearing every year, going through every single affordable housing project online, dealing with how we use advertising to get people involved in the program, our website and all the information on there. So in fact, I think not only have we implemented their recommendation, we've gone beyond their implementation, even though, so it's not exactly the way they worded it. And I think it's important to say, we're responding to the underlying concern of what they're talking about, which is getting information out to the public. So my suggestion would be, unless there's some technical reason why we couldn't do this, to change the first sentence and have it read, "The city has implemented this recommendation in a different and more comprehensive manner," period. And then just go on with what you said, "For example," and you list all the items. But that would be my suggestion as a, to change. And I like the other suggestions that were listed there earlier from council members, whoever that was, whenever that was, so thank you.
Mayor Bloom and Councilmember Schneider. No, there is no reason that that couldn't be done. I think it's an excellent idea, and so.
Good. Okay, Mr. Horton?
Mr. Burnwell? I have some suggestions for you. I think, I think the response is a good one, and generally, I'm perfectly supportive of it, but I think there's an area that perhaps can help to answer some of these issues for us that you haven't really covered too much. And in the report, it mentions the County Housing Trust Fund, and I actually am chairman of the board of another type of housing trust fund, which is a 501(c)(3) California nonprofit. And I think that groups such as this trust fund can work with the private sector, and by that I mean the businesses, and the financial sector, the savings and loans and the banks, to come up with new and creative ways of trying to address this problem. to come up with new and creative ways of trying to address this problem. I also think that if we look in our recent history and our soon-to-come future, we see a successful project at Westmont College. We see UCSB with a continuation set of projects. We see College Hospital with a project. And I can see combinations of employers such as the research sector, you know, the Silicon Beach area that we're so proud of here that associates with UCSB. And I can see all of us working together as a unified force, developing money from the financial sector and working with the private sector to produce some actual units on the ground. And I see enough real practical success in that to believe that this may be one of the relief valves. I think it's, what it recognizes is that the human factor in most of these firms is what their real value is. Having the right kind of people, the right quality. I know I'm on the board of Sanson Clinic, and I know it's difficult to even recruit high-level competent physicians to this community because when they come here and they see what they were used to in Minneapolis or Cleveland or something, they see what they can buy here, it just doesn't figure. So I think if we not only do what we're doing here in the city, which I think is wonderful, and what the county's doing, but if we can focus on this new area that I'm trying to point out, we may be able to deliver some units sooner and in a way that will open up a whole new area of financial resources to us.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barnwell.
I agree with what Mr. Horton is stressing right there. Two questions. In the 281 low income and 105 very low income units that we've built, do we mandate that the occupants of those either work and/or already work and/or live in the city of Santa Barbara? Or is, like we do with our inclusionary housing, or not? In other words, does the Capital A Affordable Program mandate that the occupants of those units have to either work or live in the city of Santa Barbara? Which is, isn't that a mandate for our inclusionary housing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barnwell, that's a marketing preference at this point. It's not an absolute mandate. And the problem with a mandate of that sort comes when we start giving money to the projects. And so I'm not aware that it's an absolute mandate from the city on any of these low income units. I think that the housing authority implements a preference, a local preference on their units. I'm almost certain that they do. And that's going to be true for the Mental Health Association, for instance. I mean, those are going to be for people who are at risk of homelessness, who are already in Santa Barbara. So the mandates usually come from the providers of the housing rather than from the city, but working with the city attorney's office, I mean, it seems like that would be something to explore if it's at all possible.
Then is there, at any point along this discussion where we could support an opportunity to push for RDA extension? Is there someplace in this document where in our discussion of the fact that RDA is sunsetting, we can add a clause, something to the effect that, and we would be supportive of, or we are working toward, or we would appreciate additional support in extending RDA's life because it's so important? I think adding something like that in there just reinforces both the success of how we've gotten to where we are and the utter disaster of what the future will be if we don't get another plan like RDA, as which everyone refers to as son of RDA. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. House? And Ms. Falcone.
When this is done and submitted to the grand jury, I understand this is going to be available on their webpage for the public to view. And it seems that there should be, perhaps when we submit this, we could include some links of our own that would then be, with a request that they'd be allowed to be active. I don't know if they would agree to that or not, but it would let us get a little bit more educational opportunity for those who have an interest. Because the city of Santa Barbara's current programs following through on the policies that have been generated over many years are pretty amazing to behold, and they need to be acknowledged as much as possible. Plus, people, again, might want to find ways to participate or engage in our processes here in the city of Santa Barbara. We are also a city that has quite a number of rental units, and there's always been a great concern of the potential loss of rentals when we see condo conversions and things like that. But my understanding from the presentation that we had at the Cabrillo Arts Center recently, I think that's where I saw it, maybe it was before that, but the rental stock in terms of a percentage of our housing units has held pretty steady over the years. I think 50, is it 8%? Or 50, somewhere in there? And it's an interesting phenomenon. You kind of wonder how that could be, but there it is. The myth or reality part is sort of what I'm addressing here. Rentals, even market rentals, really provide opportunities that ownership might not for families and for individuals. And it seems like we should somewhere wiggle that into our responses. And it doesn't mean that we're sufficient in all those. We are still trying to do better. And I would hate for somebody to read this and think that we're all so happy with everything, that we're just, that's kind of the end of it for us. That's not everything we're doing with the general plan update and all this. We're really trying to find more opportunities to even do a better job. So I hope that comes through in our comments as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. I'd like to reinforce a couple of different things. One is that on recommendation three, I think that we need to go a little bit further because when I read the comment by the grand jury, that the jurisdiction should focus on developing more very low and low income housing to meet RENA goals, well, good grief. I'm wondering what they're relying on. And I think your response is good, but I think it needs to also include that over the life of the RDA, and this goes to Mr. Barnwell's point a little bit, that we have actually, I think at this point, the number is 13% of the entire housing stock of the 38,000-plus units that we have in the city limits. 13% of that is held in affordable housing with restrictions managed largely by the housing authority. But I think that needs to be mentioned, that we have a long history of implementing this goal, and it's fine to cite this current period that we're in, but I think we need to go beyond and say, we've been there all along. We've been a leader in the state. Another one is to Mr. Barnwell's comment with regard to RDA extension. Every year, there seem to be a couple of bills that are promoted that have to do with either extending your current RDA or some other mechanism by which we can continue to do the good works that we do through that mechanism. Is there any bill that's still alive that you know of? Is there, is there something hanging fire out there that we could maybe encourage the grand jury, and maybe we could, and through other efforts, become engaged in?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falcone, Dave Gustafson is up at the California Redevelopment Association Legal Issue Symposium as we speak. And so although I'm not aware of the latest legislation, I'm sure he will be by the time he comes back. So we'll follow on that.
Good. Well, I hope we get a memo upon his return about what nifty ideas he's been able to glean. The other one is Mr. Horton's comment, and that has to do with the partnerships between governments, employers, nonprofits, developers, the public-private partnerships. There are scads of examples that we can point to. I'm not suggesting that we point to each one of them. I'm suggesting that we make a slightly larger emphasis on the fact that we have also been looking for every opportunity and had a great number of successes in these various different types of partnerships. Sometimes, I'm thinking of City College. It's a private developer who is building a project over off of Cliff Drive. That City College has actually agreed to purchase the vast majority of the condos as opposed to the houses on the hill for their faculty. And I don't think we have any money in that, though. No, we don't. But allowing, building to go up on that hill, I think, is, you know, certainly something that not all of us were happy to see, although it was a necessary thing to do. The last comment that I have has to do with RENA. And just to let people know, and I've mentioned this before, that the RENA process has a great deal, uniform anguish throughout the state is expressed with the RENA program by local jurisdictions, particularly cities. And so there is a tremendous amount of discussion at the state on real reform. Now, the administration isn't particularly eager to enter into reform, but I think the more we go ahead and continue to press those points, that the RENA one-size-fits-all program does not work for every jurisdiction. There needs to be either some flexibility or some kind of, so I think we can ask the grand jury to help us get that message across because it's one of the conversations at the League of California Cities that when engaged in, there's universal disappointment and aggravation with the program throughout the entire state. The last thing is, when you get to the median, the median income that drives all of our affordable, is that Capital A or small a? I can never remember. Anyway, the low and very low moderate income, that's what sort of drives who can get in there. Now, the federal government HUD sets that, and I'm not quite sure if we've ever asked anybody at like Lois's office or somewhere else, to look into this idea when you say that there are two different planning regions and that HUD sets it on a countywide. It's been talked about for many years, and it has starts and stops, but to actually get HUD to look at regional planning areas, as opposed to county boundaries, it's regional planning areas. And in our region, that would be the South Coast, would be a sensible regional planning area upon which to do a median income. And it would be more real than the way they currently do it. Now, I don't know if we've ever engaged in that, but maybe this is an opportunity to bring that up and to try to get some motion. Because if we tell the grand jury things that we think are helpful, that they can engage in and help us to do, maybe that sets some things in motion that we wouldn't do just on our own. So I know that's kind of a lot, but thank you. It's a great response, by the way. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I think we couldn't use a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just thought I should, maybe you should mention something with respect to the comments from Councilmember Barnwell and Councilmember Falcone about the desire to extend the life of the RDA. In a way, that's not the precise problem that we have, the immediate problem, if you will. And this came up, I think, a few weeks ago in a report given by the Redevelopment Agency by Dave Gustafson. The immediate problem is the existence of what's called the total tax increment cap. In 1986, the state, it was, to my knowledge, the first real legislation where the state started cutting back on RDAs and required RDAs, among other things, to impose some limits, a total tax increment cap on the amount of tax increment it would collect over the life of a project area. And at that time, and for a longest period of time, we understood that the CCRP, our project area, was going to end this month, August of 2007. And so when we, in 1986, did our progression, the finance director calculated how much total tax increment we would collect, and she did a progression on it, she had no idea that the CCRP was actually, because of all the different things that have happened with E-RAF and extensions, the CCRP now won't end until 2015. We're going to, in a few years, be at our total tax increment cap, and we'll be able to pay off our existing indebtedness. We've dealt with that. But if, I bring this up because if there's a way to lobby for change, whether it's at the league or at the CRA, it really is respect to this. For example, a few years ago, in dealing with another state-imposed limit, that was the date by which we could no longer incur indebtedness. And that was either a year or two ago, I can't remember exactly. Was it two years ago? We were able to change the state legislation to exempt affordable housing. So we can still incur debt, as Mr. Falcis mentioned, we can still incur long-term indebtedness for affordable housing and use our tax increment as a funding source for that debt, but that doesn't solve the total tax increment cap problem. And that's, but that's an example of our ability to convince the state to make that change in our, on an incurring indebtedness date. It was no, it was not controversial. They said, oh, affordable housing certainly will make that change. And it just does, it's occurred to many of us that possibly Sacramento would be amenable to allowing the total tax increment cap to be exceeded for the purposes of affordable housing. And you're right, though, we don't want the CCRP to end in 2015 so long as the CCRP is being used to subsidize affordable housing.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay, good. Yeah, that's a good argument. Okay. I think we're going to need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign and send the letter.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have one more. Thank you, Ms. Falcis. Go ahead and read number 13.
Close session for Conference's legal counsel regarding pending litigation.
Okay. And we will adjourn out of that. Is that okay?
Madam Mayor, there's a chance that there would be a reporting out required on this. And we can either do that by just shortly reconvening and reporting out verbally, or we can, if possibly, put it in the minutes, have the reporting out in the minute, so.
Oh, okay. If we can report out in the minutes, that would be better, probably.
Okay.
Okay. And I wanted to make sure that we adjourn later on in honor of John Pittman, who died this last week. He passed away, but he had the mission overflowing this morning for his service, and it was very touching to see everybody there. He is quite an architect in Santa Barbara, and we had just approved that Jergensen Ranch, which is where he, it's one of the first houses he designed in Santa Barbara. And he did it before he was an architect, so I thought it was kind of fitting in some ways that we approved that. And he was named an associate of the AIA, and Bill Mayhem this morning said that that means he was a cardinal in the architectural world. He was in the mission, so that's why it came to his brain like that. But John Pittman, a very good man, a very kind man, and I enjoyed working with him. He was born in 1930, so he lived a long life, all in Santa Barbara, Cottage Hospital all the way through. So good for him, and we will miss him greatly. Thank you.